I don't believe he missed. We can get to work on that. Appreciate that. All right, and. Looks like staff is present with the exception of Chief Lemon.
He is excused.
Okay. And Senator Granteria.
And she is also excused.
Very good. Making progress? Mr. Deputy Mayor, you want to hear us?
I am with you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We asked a couple of times and we didn't get any comments from you, so we're assuming you couldn't hear us, so. Welcome, sir.
I joined with the wrong account, Mr. Mayor. I had to log off and log back in.
I understand. All right. Thank you, sir. All right, do we have someone who this evening can give an indication? When we do, Mrs. Lindy, I please ask that you please rise for an indication and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pride in heaven, we are grateful that we can gather with this city council tonight that the things that they discuss will be pleasing, that they'll be able to work together and do what's best for this city of Sunnyside, and we are grateful that we have people that are trying to do what's best for the interests of the community and these things we say in the name of Jesus Christ, Stephen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. First item on the agenda this evening is public comments. Citizens are advised they must limit their remarks to the council to three minutes. Council may refer items to staff to review and or research for presentation at a future council meeting. And do we have anyone signed up or wanting to give public comments this evening? I'm not seeing a thundering herd of people coming up, so I'm going to assume that the answer is no. Item two, consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of the following. Item A, minutes. Approve the minutes of the July twenty four, two thousand twenty three regular meeting. Approve the minutes of the August seven, two thousand twenty three workshop meeting. Pillow vouchers approved. Pillow vouchers numbers one, one, nine, three, four, one through one, one, nine, three, five, one, and wire transfers listed for seven hundred sixty four thousand, two hundred and forty six dollars and thirteen cents for the period ending on July twenty five, twenty twenty three. Claim vouchers. Approved claim voucher numbers one, zero, six, nine, four, eight through one, zero, seven, zero, four, zero, and wire transfers as listed for four hundred forty thousand, fourteen dollars and sixty three cents when the period ending on July nineteen, twenty twenty three. Approved claim voucher numbers one, zero, seven, zero, four, one through one, zero, seven, one, zero, zero, and wire transfers as listed for three hundred thirty four thousand, three hundred ninety five dollars, twenty four cents for the period ending on July twenty six, twenty twenty three. Approved claim voucher numbers one, zero, seven, one, zero, one through one, zero, seven, one, five, four, and wire transfers as listed for four hundred forty thousand, nine hundred dollars and forty four cents for the on August twelve. I'm sorry, August two, twenty twenty three. Council, new item that you recently moved from the consent agenda. Hearing none? What is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve. I'll second.
From my council, Ripley, second by Council Hicks to approve the consent agenda as presented as it is on this item. And now, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, the motion passes. Active agenda. Item A, North Avenue sidewalk improvements. Consider approving a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with C and E Trenching LLC to construct the North Avenue sidewalk improvements in the amount of eighty four thousand, three hundred eighty dollars. Madam City Manager.
And I will trust my staff with the staff report and make sure that we welcome our new Public Works Director, Ross Sanchez.
Thank you. Uh.
Turn your mic on.
Yeah, it's on. So, uh, okay, so. Thank you. Um, I'll bring you to the project here. So in two thousand and fifteen, Roman Avenue was closed off between North Avenue and Schoon Road. Uh, this closure was due to numerous close calls at the intersection of Lappin Avenue and Patrick Court within, uh, Roman Avenue traffic. Um, as part of that closure, the driveway approach for the business of La Palateria La Norteña located at one twenty Roman Avenue was relocated to North Avenue. Uh, the city informed the business owner that their driveway approaches would be rebuilt. So this project, uh, will construct a hundred and eighty five feet of curb and gutter, nine hundred and twenty five square feet of sidewalk along North Avenue, one thirty foot commercial driveway and two twenty foot residential driveways. Thirty five tons of asphalt be installed along the new North Avenue curb line and also on the back of sidewalk to complete the driveway approaches. On August third, twenty twenty three, city staff opened bids for North Avenue sidewalk improvements and received seven bids. The lowest responsible bidder was C and E Trenching LLC out of Pasco, Washington with a bid of eighty four thousand, three hundred and eighty thousand. This low bid is approximately thirty percent above the engineer's estimate of sixty five thousand, one hundred. HLA Engineered has reviewed and checked the bid proposals of all bidders and recommend the city of Sunnyside to award a construction contract to C and E Trenching LLC uh, in that amount. Um. This project will be funded out of transportation benefit district revenues. So, uh, I seek city council for a resolution authorizing city manager to enter into an agreement with C and E Trenching LLC Construction to construct the North Avenue sidewalk improvements in the amount of eighty four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars.
Thank you, sir. Council members, any questions?
Is this the same company that's doing the Sixth Street sidewalk?
No.
For the questions or comments? So I have one, this additional price over what was estimated at the beginning, can that be attributed to higher fuel costs, uh, petroleum costs that would contribute to that, or what is the reason for that?
Uh, the cost overrun generally is, uh, in terms of just having a very small contract, uh, with this, with any contractors. And then also, um, the time of year and how busy everyone is, uh, along with just an increase in material costs across the board. Um, concrete right now is going fairly expensive, and this is predominantly just a concrete project, so it, it is in line with what we are seeing across the board and other bid openings. Uh, the highest bid on this particular project was right around a hundred and sixteen thousand, so we had quite a wide range. Um, there were three low bids, though, all within the eighty four to eighty nine thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. Further questions or comments? Hearing none, what is the desire of the council on this item?
Move to approve. I'll second.
All right, we got a motion by Council Ripley, second by Council Hicks to approve the resolution that authorizes the city manager to enter into an agreement with C and E Trenching LLC to construct the North Avenue sidewalk improvements in the amount of eighty four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars as it is on this item. And in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion passes. Item B, ordinance to update the schedule of fees and charges in S M C two dot zero two dot zero two zero. Consider adopting ordinance updating the schedule of fees and charges listed in S M C two dot zero two dot zero two zero. Madam City Manager.
Now, I will turn this over to Ms. Warner for, uh, staff report.
Ms. Warner.
Good evening, Council and Mayor and Madam City Manager. Um, we went over this change in the workshop, uh, last week, but I know, Mr. Mayor, you were not here, so most of these changes are, um, are in the garbage section, section eight, and that is in regards to the dumping fees for, for Yakima County going up. Those went up in June, but because we had such a drastic change in our garbage contract and our garbage billing this year, we kind of wanted to take a wait and see on how it would actually affect, um, our billings, and so at this time, we're ready to go ahead and, and request that it's a two point five percent increase, which is significantly lower than what the county increased by, um, I think, close to seven percent, so we're still keeping a close eye on this. Um, there's only a few months left in the year. So I think we should have a pretty good idea of exactly where we need to be for twenty twenty four um, at the beginning, uh, when we pass that, that fee schedule for twenty twenty four, and then hopefully we'll be able to sit steady, um, through the rest of the contract with just the normal, um, increases for CPI. The other items in this fee schedule change are in chapter twelve of the municipal code, which dealt with street permits and inspections. Um, there were various sections of chapter twelve that referred to permits and inspections and fees, but those fees weren't listed or established anywhere. So we would like to go ahead and establish those now and get those in the code so that we can start, um, correctly charging for those. And then there were a couple of other changes, um, in chapters fifteen through seventeen with community development, but they were limited, um, just a few, you know, uh, housekeeping type things. Um, I think we increased some of the big plotter copying costs just because we weren't recouping the cost, um. And I think that's about it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments?
Um, when I was reading over the the fees, they talked about the vector truck and the camera truck. How often do we use those, or does the public have to pay for those?
Those are typically. Those are typically during construction, uh, of, uh, where the city needs to go in and inspect the camera or clean the, the new line, um, for their camera inspection, so typically that's when it's done. Unless for some reason, somebody just wanted to, um, but typically we don't do that, it's just if, if there was a broken line or something and we needed to find out.
Okay.
Well, I believe historically, we've actually had to calculate it manually for everybody that does it. So with an hourly rate and the time that they used the equipment, so we're just trying to simplify it here by putting it at a flat.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand, I understand what you're doing. It was just the fact that, uh, I, I, I didn't see how, how, why, or when you would, you would be called on for that service, so you answered my question. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Hearing no questions or comments, what is the desire of the council on this item?
Move to approve. I'll second.
We've got a motion by Council Hicks, second by Council Ripley to adopt an ordinance updating the schedule of fees and charges listed in S M C two dot zero two dot zero two zero. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I also vote aye, motion passes. Thank you. Budget, budget amendment two, considering adopting an ordinance amending the twenty twenty three budget, Madam City Manager.
Again, I'll turn this over to Ms. Warner for staff report.
Ms. Warner.
Thank you very much. Um, this is our second budget amendment for fund year, or for fiscal year twenty twenty three. Um, it's not super huge, the bottom line change to our expected ending fund balance is just about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Um, the change does encompass adding some revenues that we hadn't expected or that were higher than expected and increasing expenditures based on previous, um, items that council has approved or, um, updated, uh, forecasts and the like, and I'm happy to answer any questions for any of these items as well.
Also, questions from Ms. Warner? Hearing no questions. What is the desire on council on this item?
Move to approve. Second.
That was Mr. Farmer. All right, motion by Council Ripley, second by Council Farmer to adopt an ordinance amending the twenty twenty three budget, is there a debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I'm two vote aye, motion passes. Item D, city manager contract. Consider approving an amendment to the city manager's of all his contracts. Ms. Alba.
So there are five minor changes that, um, I would like to request. Um, one of them is the, to take out the salary dollar amount and put it to the according to the classification and compensation schedule adopted by city council. That way, if the amount changes in that document, it doesn't have to be reflected in this contract. Um, number two, change the personal vehicle stipend from three hundred, four hundred, uh, as agreed in the spring of twenty twenty three. Remove, the city shall provide financial support to allow manager to attempt to obtain the Association of Washington City Certificate of municipal leadership by December thirty first, twenty twenty three. I am not eligible to get this certificate. And, um, remove residency requirements. Uh, this has been changed in our state law, so, um, I'm allowed to live within certain distance, um, but it's not really a stated inside city limits anymore, so we can remove that section. And then added a vacation buyout of forty hours per year. And specifically, I have to have taken forty hours of vacation and have to have a balance of forty hours in order to cash that out, so in dollars, it's about sixty six hundred dollars.
All right, council members, questions or comments from Ms. Alba?
And other city employees, they're, uh, they're able to, uh, do the vacation buyout?
Yes, I actually copied the language from the police guild's, um, contract. So I took theirs and instead of forty eight hours, I put forty, because that's my work week. So I, I actually just really cut and pasted it right out of the contract, so I'd be exactly as they are.
Hey, thanks.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to amend, uh, approve the amendment of the city manager's contract, Elizabeth Alba's contract.
Very good.
I'll second it.
All right, we got a motion by Deputy Mayor Stucci to approve the amendment to the city manager's contract, we got a second by Ms. Ripley. Is there a debate on this item? Hearing none, what is the desire of the council on this item? I'm sorry, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I two vote aye, motion passes. Items from council members, no appointments for boards and commissions. We have one vacancy on the economic development committee. And I have heard of nobody applying for that position yet, and so that position is open. Um, I do have a pending, we have to set it the committee that's going to review the applications to look over everybody who is on the committee who's, uh, who's turned us up and contact all of them. Um, I received the, the paperwork from the city clerk, however, I went on vacation, and so while on vacation, I don't know how everybody else does it, but I don't do an awful lot of work.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, sir, um, uh, Mr. Farmer and I and you will, will meet here shortly for a rules committee meeting. Um, and we can start going over applications for boards and commissions.
Always correct, sir. Thank you for that. And if anybody knows of anybody who wishes to apply, please encourage them to do so, and they can do so by contacting the city clerk by getting on the city webpage. And get all the help they need in the application. Right, item B, council request status report. Madam City Manager.
So we have no changes on any of the items, and, um, really with the changes in leadership team, I would like to regroup on all of these items and make sure that we have the right people in the right spots to get this stuff working, because Ral's kind of on his first day, and we have, we don't have a permanent fire chief at this moment, so when we can get those two positions in place, then we'll, we'll tackle this again.
Council, what are your feelings on that? Is there any objection? Without objections, it's approved.
Thank you.
And I know, Ral, your learning curve is about vertical, especially starting today, it's going to be an exciting couple of weeks until you see like you get your feet under you, but, uh, confident in you. Are there any comments and or questions by council? And Mr. Hicks, we're going to give you a chance to go first today.
Uh, what are we doing on our vacancy? How many applications do we have?
We've seen applications, I uh, of somebody who's interested, but it was just a moment and there was no other information. So I, I have nothing to report, and we would like to get somebody in that position, obviously sooner rather than later. So if you know of anybody who would be looking to serve for the rest of the year, um, please have them contact myself or the manager, and we will get that process started. I do have a path for one of the candidates. And, uh, wanting to fill in that position, however, I, I it totally, council had agreed that with the if there's a, and it's on that position, if there's two people in for that position, it was kind of appear to be showing patriotism with that one person to give them the position, I understand legal has determined that's probably not necessarily the case, it was okay if we were to appoint somebody from that pool. But I think as council, we all kind of agree that we felt that it would be showing some sort of patriotism, or could we perceive that, or we chose not to do that, so. Um, but individual wasn't enthusiastic about serving that position, but, um, understanding also when I explained why we chose not to do that, so. Ms. Ripley.
I went to the National Night Out and, uh, they were pretty good. I went to the one at the park on Tuesday night, and that was really nice, the pool was just full. And, uh, then I went to the one at the, uh, community center at, on Friday night, and that one was really neat, too. Big old helicopter there.
Good, glad to hear that. I was unable to attend by virtue of the fact that I wasn't in town, and but I saw all the posts on Facebook, and it seemed to be very well received and very well done, so when, when I when I'm in town, I like to go to those, but when one makes vacation plans, there's what they call an opportunity cost, where I took the opportunity to go away and I had to pay the cost of not being able to attend the, the event, so. Mr. Farmer.
We had an LTAC meeting, uh, we reviewed all of the proposals. Uh, this coming Friday, uh, we will make our choice.
Very good. And Mr. Deputy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just one item, just want to, uh, thank, uh, the city manager for attending the uh, Yakima Valley, uh, crime lab, uh, grand opening and ribbon cutting. Um, I want to let everyone know that as of the seventh of August, we started processing cases. So the lab is open and for business. I want to thank everyone for their support on that.
Thank you, sir. And for myself, I was gone for two weeks, and so I missed out on a lot of what was going on. I was equally excited as Mr. Stucci about the crime lab, that's something that both of us had submitted over the last while, and excited to see that get voted in and approved and funded and now functioning. And I think it is going to be a phenomenal asset to our area, to local law enforcement, and has the potential to set an example for the rest of the state on how we can possibly do this and work together as communities, so I am, I'm pretty excited about that whole thing, it's, uh.
This is actually a great project. Um, just so for your information, so you're aware and council's aware, Congressman Newhouse shared with us at the event that this is the first in the nation crime lab like this.
And that is exciting, too. We are, we have the opportunity to be a trendsetter nationally. So, that's really cool. Item B. Upcoming council meetings, Madam City Manager.
And I will turn this over to Deputy Clerk Madiseta.
Okay, so coming up on August twenty eighth, the regular meeting, um, you'll be, on the agenda will be the LTAC funding recommendations. Um, there'll be Teamsters Union seven sixty supervisor contract and also classifications and compensation schedules for CPAs and positions.
Very good. And if anybody has items that need to be added to the agenda, please get that to the clerk or the manager or myself as soon as possible, in order to get that included right away. Items from department heads, Madam City Manager.
And I'm going to start at the end with the acting fire chief, and then let's let you guys staff report across.
All right, uh, year-to-date emergency responses, we're at two thousand, seven hundred and thirty six responses, which again puts us about a hundred uh, ahead of the former year trend. Um, the last two weeks since our last, uh, official council meeting, we did run one hundred and eighty seven. Um, and, uh, as we continue our, our training during the summer, even in the heat, we're, uh, up to, um, just shy of seventeen hundred training hours for the department for this year, so really excited about that and have quite a few more trainings upcoming that, uh, we'll add those numbers and add to our skill set as a department. Uh, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Um, as far as administrative services, um, I just wanted to remind you that it's budget season, yay. And so we have our first budget workshop scheduled for Saturday, the twenty sixth um, at nine AM to noon at the community center. And so, um, it'll just be a, a sort of an overview of the process where we're at, where we're starting, um, making sure that everyone's on the page, the same page with some of the assumptions that we're starting with, and then we'll get that ball rolling.
Run, run.
Thank you. So I'll update you on a couple, uh, projects. Uh, Sixth Street roadway will be open this Wednesday. Uh, awaiting railroad authorization, so there'll be it, it, there'll still be some gravel, uh, in the area of the roadway until we get that squared away. Uh, and then the second project is going to start August twenty first, which is the Y V H, uh, grind and overlay. Uh, that's starting August twenty first. Um, and roadway will be open during construction.
Good. Excited about that Sixth Street project getting finished.
Good evening, city council. Uh, so I have a few things for you. Uh, we have a new, we had a new planner starting on August first, I'm very excited. Um, so she's getting acclimated to the area and to the processes of the city of Sunnyside, so, um, she's very enthusiastic and ready to learn, so I'm kind of showing her the ropes. Um, so over the month of, uh, July, I'll kind of read you from some stats here from our code enforcement, we started abating, so we started abating two different houses. Um, we've been working with some with some people removing all of the scrap metal from, from the houses and getting it ready for, for, um, demolition abatement. Um, so we've been doing that, and then one of them is at three seventeen, thirteen seventeen Harrison, and then I believe it's six nineteen South Ninth, I believe, is the, the two property addresses. Um, so that's kind of been a fun and interesting task, um, over the course of July. Um, but as far as depart, department, the kind of going through here, code enforcement's had eleven department assists. Um, thirty two, there's been a lot of parking and car and car and abandoned vehicle stuff this, this last month, or in the, through the month of July, um, thirty two parking, twenty four weeds and grass, seven yard sale, um, that one's gotten a lot better. Um, twenty one citizen complaint, twenty five abandoned vehicles, uh, ten instances graffiti, sixteen follow-ups, um, ten notice of issue, ten notice of violations issued, ten citizen assists, and twenty three officer-generated cases. So they've been running around trying to get people to clean up their stuff, so. And, and, um, we have received, I just want to put this on your radar, we did receive, um, a couple complaints, there is a, um, some stuff out in front of the side and on the sidewalk, kind of drilled into the sidewalk a little bit in front of, um, a, a some stuff out in front of the side and on the sidewalk, kind of drilled into the sidewalk a little bit in front of, um, a, a um, rest sports bar downtown that should be removed this week. It's either going to be today, tonight, or tomorrow. So it should be, and then repairing any sort of sidewalk damage that happened, yes.
Nothing at this time, unless someone has questions.
Questions for Mr. Riley? All right.
Deputy City Clerk? Okay, so on the, um, in front of you, you'll see a A W C article, um, how to run a council meeting with Jurassic Parliament. And I wanted, uh, council to read over this. I would like to request, um, either as part of the budget process or, um, kind of moving forward, I'd like to offer this same kind of council, uh, training possibly in January, if we have any new members that come on board. And then I would also like to offer this up to all of our subcommittees for their attendance. And I think it's really, um, a good way for people to understand their role in, on the council and understand, um, kind of what they do, uh, for us. So, um, I just wanted to let council have it. I will be asking for this, um, in our budget workshop. And I did not provide Mr. Stucci a copy because he could probably teach this course for us.
I would agree.
And then, um, one other item, I will be taking a vacation next week, and I'm going to really turn off my cellphone. Um, I will be putting, uh, Trevor Martin in charge, and he knows where I live and can get a hold of me if something, if the place is burning down or we have a catastrophe. But I'm actually going to really take a, a breather next week, so just wanted to let council know. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Couple of things came to my mind, but after, I know I should have said it during item C up above, but a couple of things came to my mind. Number one, while over the course of my vacation, I had a conversation with two retired wildland firefighter experts, um, spent a lot of years in that, and in listening to them talk and getting insight from them, I became very impressed with the quality of our fire department. Um, our firefighters have been well trained, they know how to respond, and anything I heard from these two individuals, again, retired wildland firefighters and some of the stuff they had to say, um, I think our firefighters are well ahead of that. So well done to everyone involved in the training, pass out on them for me. And secondly, well, formally, I would like to welcome you to your position. I know this is a big step. I made a comment about it. Um, you, if you were not felt to be capable for this job, I know Mr. Fisher will be missed, but we also wish him well in his new position in Randu, and, um, look forward to all the work that you're going to be able to do and help us get done. You've got a lot of good people working with you, and so wish you the best in this job. All right, if there's no further business to come before council, or if there's no objections during this meeting at seven oh two PM, thank you, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Bye, Mr. Stucci.